12th, 2017, Tiverton Town Council Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Mrs. Mello?
Counsel Perry.
President.
Counsel LaBeau.
Here.
Counsel Ryan.
Present.
Counsel Hilton.
Present.
Counsel Chabot.
Present.
Counsel DeMaderis.
Present.
And Counsel Edwards.
Present.
All present. This is brought before the council consent agenda. CA 1A, approval of special council meeting minutes, April 17th, 2017. 1B, approval of special council meeting, May 2nd, 2017. 1C, approval of special council meeting executive session minutes, May 2nd, 2017. 1D, approval of regular council meeting minutes, May 8th, 2017. CA 2, receipt of minutes from the following boards and commission. Planning Board 4, Tree Commission, Council Subcommittee on Casino, Conservation Commission, and Foglin Beach Oversight Committee. CA 3, correspondents receive and file. 3A, Representative John Edwards regarding stoplight at the intersection of Fish Road and Bogomash Road. 3B, Town of Exeter regarding opposition to H6172 Act relating to agriculture and forestry. CA 4, approval of tax accessory abatements. CA 5, Planning Board response to Town Council request for recommendation on amendment to zoning ordinance addressing regulation of accessory structures. CA 6, Susan Gill, Planning Board Administrative Officer Activity Report for May. CA 7, Town Administrator Police and Fire Overtime Report for month of May. CA 8, Town Administrator Distribution of Monthly, Department Monthly Reports for May. CA 9, Treasurer Denise Charette, Distribution of Bond Sale Refinance and Ratings Update. CA 10, Town Clerk Request Approval of Extension of Bay Street Moratorium to December 31st, 2017. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards.
CA 7.
CA 7. Any others? Do I have a motion to approve the remainder of consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. CA 7, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you. Chief Lloyd, I see you in the back there. Overtime for the prior month, is that number up relative to the previous months?
Yes, sir, it's up. I think, I just look for it now, I just came from a call, so I'm sorry, I don't have it with me.
No worries.
I believe it's around $10,000 this month, and the audit number goes down. We've been short, we have three, we had three people currently out on long-term illness and injury as of right now, and then two other members were also out for an extended period. We've gotten two back, we're still short three.
So Chief, is it fair to say that the driver of overtime is the number of guys being over minimum staffing, as opposed to just the number of hours for each shift?
In this case, the number of personnel on shift does make a difference with regards to overtime, because having the vacancies, we can't absorb, they're into extra leave now, so we can't absorb the extra leave as it comes up.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President.
Ms. DeMaderis?
Are you moving men around?
I have.
You have? Okay.
Most of the vacancies occurred on shift three, and we had to move personnel, so I have people out of their positions now, trying to bring us to the highest maximum number we can on each shift, but still, with the doubling up on vacation and other leave that is available, it leaves us with vacancies we have to fill, which drives the overtime up.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move to approve CA 7.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Open public forum for announcement, comments, and questions. I have...
Can you move me to the end?
I have, number one on the list is Linda Lawson, Tiverton Days, July 28 through the 30th, 2017. Ms. Lawson?
I'm gonna select this seat, because I don't think that's for me.
You sure you don't want to be on the nightly news talking about Tiverton Days?
I'm positive, but, this was all wonderful, thank you for having me. Just here for you, to let you all know that the Celebrate Tiverton, now Tiverton Celebrates Tiverton Days, is coming back. So, we have a planning group that's been meeting, I have met with the police department, the fire department, as well as the Recreation Commission, I think on our new town administrator's second day. I barged in his office, introduced myself, and informed him that this was going on. It's July 28 through the 30th. We're gonna try to keep things as they were in the past. We do recognize that the beach is being worked on, and the DPW Director, we're in contact with him, for the possibility that on that July 28th, which is a Friday evening, that we may or may not be able to have the bonfire on the beach, and we may need to postpone that to the following month. The parade is scheduled to happen in the morning on Saturday, the 29th. I have been in contact with, like I said, the police chief, and we'll work with him on anything necessary, and we're working on a community children family event at the library that evening. So, it is a new committee, there's been some new members that have joined, we're really trying to open this out and bring more folks in to volunteer on the event, and we're hoping to have Tiverton Days and have more Tiverton Days that celebrates our community and all aspects of our community and everyone within our community.
Are you planning on having a 5K race?
The high school has had a lot on their plate, but the 5K may not happen on that Sunday. They're looking at some things, if not, they want to have a road race, which would mean a lot more work, a lot more permits, and work with, you know, with the folks here and the police chief. So, there is a 5K going on in town in June, kind of competing ones the following month, but, but they definitely do want to have it.
Very good. Any questions from the council?
I do, I have a question.
Mr. LaBeau.
How are you financially? Do you get it done?
Do you have money?
I do. It just so happens.
We have, we have very little funding, and I'm incredibly concerned regarding purchasing insurance for these events.
I got 500 bucks you can have.
We've had, thank you very much.
I'm gonna give it to that lady, the treasurer lady, we have 500 extra from what I collected. So, are you somebody to give it to, so you can have?
So you're gonna save Tiverton Days?
I'm gonna give you 500 bucks. I don't know how far it's gonna go, but I have 500.
It will, but obviously, we have police detail that we need to, you know, to pay for and things like that. The biggest concern that I still have, and I'm $500 richer than I came in, so maybe I should be on the other mic. I love how that happens, I'll come back next week.
Where should people send donations?
People, I, contact tivitancelebrate@gmail.com, and I will also give information here at the town hall, if they want to contact the town clerk's office, they're always great with passing those messages along to us. But, you know, the sustainability of this event, you know, is a concern. There's a lot of interested people, but, you know, coordinating it and sustaining it is, you know, is of concern.
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
I think that, you know, based on, on some of the concerns that Linda has here, that it might be worthwhile getting an agenda item and making this a town-sponsored event, so we can alleviate the insurance, because obviously, this is a community event, it's not a fun, it's not a, not, not a nonprofit trying to raise money, it's not a charity thing, it's something for the community. And I think this might be a good, a good, you know, use of the council, to have them piggyback on the inter-local trust, similar to what we could have done with the bonfire that we were discussing prior this, early this year.
Tony?
Sweet, sweet. Can I beg your pardon? Is this a town property?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
The bonfire happens at Grinnell's, the parade marches from Family Ties to Little Bear down Main Road, and the 5K generally happens at the high school. And the community family event in the evening at the library.
I think we'll, we'll look into that as an option.
So, thank you very much, we'll proceed, and we'll be back probably on the next agenda with all our proper permits and sign-offs and things like that. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Blair Moore and neighbors of Main Road, Tiverton, unwashed clam shells.
They don't, they don't really need the scoop.
Please state your name and address.
Blair Moore, 3119 Main Road.
Sharon Moore, 3119 Main Road.
Apologies, Madam President, we've never done this before, so...
It's okay.
Thank you for seeing us, members of the jury, is that what you call it? I, I just, I'm sure, I'm sure you've all heard by now that we're facing a pretty smelly shell issue on Main Road. We have a petition started with all of the, our neighbors and everything, that we would like to put forth to try and get a law to not be able to use unwashed clam shells with the meat still attached.
Yes, it's the bodies that are the problem.
Yeah, so, if you've seen all the maggots and the flies that are covering the, sorry for the graphic foot, but it's just become a health hazard, and it's just waste, and the smell is permeating, it just so happens that it's five feet from our, our individual home. We have a neighbor down the road that is actually wanting to sell her house, and they will not put it up for sale, or take anyone through it, or even list it until the smell is gone.
And that's, that's not fair to any neighbor. They should be able to sell, rent, do what they need to do in order to live. We need to open our windows, we need to close our windows when we want to. We need to sit outside when we want to.
So all the neighbors on Main Road cannot open their windows, they have influx amounts of ridiculous amounts of flies because of all the maggots, they cannot sit outside in their outdoor areas, and because we're five feet away from the actual flesh, we can't actually sit in our living room and watch television, and sit, and eat in our kitchen, because it's, the smell is throughout the house.
So what we really want to put down is that we can try to get a law for the Town of Tiverton residents, that these unwashed shells with, with the bodies in them not be dumped. For driveways.
For driveways.
Especially...
Because I know Evelyn's uses washed shells, I mean, we all, we're community in Tiverton, we all need to be part of this, you know, respect for our neighbors, respect for the idea that we have clean air and, you know, can use our outdoor areas. I mean, it's summer, and whoever loves this area, so, it's been 12 days now that we've been going, that we've been going through this. I know the police chief was amazing, and hand-delivered the cease and desist to...
So we want to thank him for that.
The Rose family, and, yeah.
That's it? That's it.
Tony, do we have any type of update?
We do, yes. Hi. The police chief has done this, as they said, he's been, he's been very good on the whole thing, but, we're gonna try something new on this case. Because it is an ordinance violation at this time, under your code, it's actually a misdemeanor. After the notice was served, once seven days goes by, he will, if the situation is not alleviated, he will be summoned into district court, and we will proceed on a criminal complaint on this basis, based upon, you know, what has happened here, the violation of the ordinance. I know it's a private nuisance, but it's also a public one too.
Yes.
The town is trying as hard as it can on, on this situation, and we're moving forward on this matter in district court on a criminal complaint if the condition is not alleviated after the seven days of the citation.
Which is on the 7th, which is Saturday.
Can I ask you a question? What happens if this was to happen next year? Because last year, it happened on the property across the way, and all the neighbors didn't know what that smell was.
Until we, until we approached them, and, and they were like, no wonder I had flies all inside my house and everything like that.
So I'm just wondering, what happens if it is extracted at the seven days, but then this happens again next year?
How does that...
The, the, the main issue that is being discussed here, and I want to not only address you, but I think that the council has the same questions. The question is not only the violations, but also enforcement.
Yes.
And we've come to a group decision, I think, with the chief, the administrator, and the solicitor, that what we need to do is to have the wider tools, the greater tools that we would have if this were a criminal prosecution, to make sure that it's not a continuing nuisance that keeps happening down the line. And that's what we're trying to do here.
Right, for all neighbors.
That's correct, yes.
That's correct, the whole of Tiverton, not just the Main Road issue, the whole of Tiverton.
Yes.
Good, okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
Mr. Solicitor, you cited that this is under an ordinance, can you just let me know what ordinance that is, that we're operating under?
I have it here. You need to... Do you want to give it to you?
I was just, I have them all in front of me, I just say if you have the number, I'll just, I just want to jot that down.
Sanitation, accumulation, sorry, all exterior property and premise shall be maintained a clean, safe, and sanitary condition, the occupant shall keep part of the exterior property which such occupies, occupies, or controls a clean and sanitary condition. Am I doing it right? Sorry, sorry, apologies, 302 exterior property, 302.1 sanitation, 308 rubbish and garbage, 308.1 accumulation of rubbish and garbage.
Okay.
The dead bodies.
Shred parts.
Not, not specific to the clam shells, but it's encompassing.
Okay.
So, so to answer your question, there is a law.
Thank you.
And that's why we could issue a cease and desist order.
Okay.
And go through the process, as the solicitor has explained.
Okay.
Okay?
We also know that this is happening over on Crandall Road, but they haven't been able to get anything done about that one, because they, they called us, because we, you know, we started a little bit going on there. Sorry about that.
Sorry.
But anyway, so they're calling us, so it's actu, it's actually happening more in, in Tiverton, it's just not on our end. So we have to just make sure that our neighbors don't have...
Well, they should be contacting the town.
Okay.
If that's the situation.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Joe Souza, Trash Collection.
Right, right to the mic, huh, Joe?
Joe Souza, 49 Hancock Street. Well, although I've been on political vacation, I've still been attending the landfill committee meetings, and thanks to Steve, I get to watch the council meetings on my leisure, and I listen to discussion about the trash contract. And there was one situation that wasn't discussed, and that was the how to pay for the bins. First, I thought, in my opinion, that we should go trash and recycle bins, just do the whole thing, get it over with, transfer it, that way we can get the automated pickup and make the savings there, okay? There was significant savings. The thing was, I didn't hear anybody come up with the other op, mention the other option, and there wasn't another option to pay that, it was close to $600,000, and that was to take that money out of the landfill closure account. If we were to take the $600,000 out of the landfill account, then we don't have to borrow money from the trash provider at interest to pay for the bins. It would be a one-time shot, we would take the money, pay for the bins. I live right on the state line, Fall River changed over to the automated, they put the bins out, although, they do it a little bit different, because they watch what's in the bins, they actually, the guy gets out of the truck and uses a tipper, they're not using the arm, similar to Middletown, which, which is what we could go to, which is actually further savings. I know it's tough to take money out of that fund, because it's for the closure, but when you look what's going on with our landfill, we have a better, seems that we have a better arrangement with the, all of a sudden, we have a better arrangement with DEM, with our landfill. It seems that our new director is able to communicate better with the, the DEM for some reason, and some of the things that we were told by the previous, I'm not gonna get into that, I'll just say that I felt like I was lied to, and it really ticked me off, but, you know, I kind of knew better anyway, I think you know what I'm talking about. The main thing is, though, I look down the street on Tiverton's side on a windy day, and half of the bins have milk bottles and everything blown out, and then I look across the street at the Fall River, and that side of the street is clean, except for what blew over there from Tiverton, because they went to the bins. For years, we've had trash blowing around our streets every windy day, so, you know, it's a chance, and the dogs getting into the trash cans when people put them out at night, we've all heard all the stories. Let's do it, let's make the change, let's use the money out of the, out of landfill closure account, purchase the bins, get the cheapest account we can, the cheapest bid we can with the trash for the next three years. Let's do it, because, and, you know, I've heard a lot, all the old people, my neighbor across the street is 86 years old, and I see him every week, every Friday, push those bins out of his garage, up his driveway, like it's nothing. They're not really that heavy, they're on wheels, they drag real easy, and, you know, all the stories about the bins are too big and too heavy, that, people will be used to them within a matter of a month, people will get used to them, and they'll start to like it better when they don't have to walk up the street and pick up their milk cartons and things. So, let's, let's do it, let's use the landfill closure account, let's buy the bins, it's a one-time deal, we'll have enough money, I'll also will mention it, it may be that we can keep our landfill open longer than the three years, if we continue as we're going with the recycling. Just because the landfill continues, it's a big pile of trash, and we keep putting dirt on top of it, so it keeps, under its own weight, sinking down, so we've gained more space, and because our new Public Works Director is working well with our DEM, we're now gonna be able to use that extra room, we're gonna be able to go to that full altitude, so we may even get more than three years. The bags will pay, that was a good deal, getting into that bags, we all know that, although a lot of people don't like it, it's gonna, it's gonna save us a lot in the end, just an interest on the bonds. So, all right, that's the end of my piece, I'm going home.
Thanks, Joe.
Only other thing, you're gonna, the new bar, it's, it used to be Benjamin's.
Yeah.
It's here for a license today, I live right next door, and I'm totally want to say, please give them the license, they're doing a real good job cleaning the place up, and it's gonna be a clean and decent place.
Thanks, Joe.
See you later.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Ms. DeMaderis?
Tony, the landfill account is restricted, can we take it out for anything other than closing the land?
Off the top of my head, it says no.
Yeah, I brought that up, I brought that up earlier, when they said it was a restricted account, we could not take anything out of there.
If we could, we would have already taken it.
Right.
Okay, next up, Jeff Belli, Trash Collection.
Jeff Belli, to Burt Street. I'm not gonna get up here and reiterate a lot of what Joe Souza said. I am on the recycling committee, I know a lot of the people that are on the committee are all for, you know, let's go full automated, let's get this over and done with. If we can get the money by, you know, legally, you know, taking it out of the, out of the, out of the landfill closure account, let's do it, let's, you know, let's get into the 21st century, and let's just go and do it. I don't, I don't, you know, the reason why I put my name down is I didn't know if the landfill closure, you know, committee was gonna be able to, to speak tonight when I came up, so, you know, I know we did take a consensus at the last meeting, and a lot of, pretty much a lot of the people that were there, if we can get the money, let's get the bins, and let's go, go full automated, unlike, you know, manual for the trash, and, you know, automated for the recycling, let's just go full automated, that way we don't have the trash strewn down Main Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next up, Seconic River Outfitters, check presentation for winter rec budget items that were cut from the fiscal year 17, 18 budget.
It's my girl.
How you doing?
Could you state your name and address?
My name's Jenny Costa, 1338 Crandall Road. On behalf of Seconic River Outfitters...
Read your notes.
On behalf, it's gonna mess me up. On behalf of Seconic River Outfitters and Randy LaBeau, we present this check of $2,500 to the town treasurer to save the trick-or-treat.
Trunk-or-treat.
Trunk-or-treat.
There you go, girl.
And Christmas festivities. All remaining funds will be donated to Randy LaBeau's charity of choice. Thank you.
Which I think we...
Get that girl over there, they'll have to give her that money in more time. Hold them with their hands up.
Thank you to Seconic River Outfitters for their kind donation to apply to the trunk and treat and the Christmas festivities events.
She needs in.
Next item, B, public hearings and presentations. Advertised public hearings continued from the May 22nd meeting. B1, Paul Hebert, Lyrix Bar and Grill, 4 Stafford Road, request for a BV license, a liquor license transfer from Benjamin Sports Club, Inc., subject to meeting legal requirements, additional documentation, detailed plan, floor plan, and menu. You see, that's been provided. And at the same time, we'll also take into consideration C1, Paul Hebert, Lyrix Bar and Grill, 4 Stafford Road, request for entertainment license, which was also continued from the May 22nd meeting, and also, C2, Paul Hebert, Lyrix Bar and Grill, 4 Stafford Road, request approval of a victory license. Hi, welcome back.
Good evening, how are you?
Very good.
Excellent.
Have you been working with the police department?
Yes, we have.
And the town clerk's office, and...
I'd just like to reiterate again, that whatever Benjamin's was in the past is not what we are. We're definitely different, the name says it all, you know, we're into music, 60s, 70s, 80s, country-western, that's kind of the theme of the bar, it's a family restaurant is really what we want to be. There'll be no drugs there, believe me when I tell you, will not be allowed. I imagine you remember my background was in law enforcement. I didn't mention was my wife, Joanne, who for 27 years was a director of the detox unit for STA, and she'll be working at the bar also, so, between her background and mine, believe me, there will be no drugs in that bar, absolutely none.
Very good. I see you have a floor plan attached. Now, I'm trying to get this situated, it says, at the top, it says, door to outside. Is that on, actually on Stafford Road?
No, that's into the back, to the parking lot, to the outside. I believe, I can't see which one you have.
To the patio.
Yeah, that one that says, right down back here, which one, which one you...
There's a garden and a grass area?
Yeah, that's the back patio, that's the back patio. Door's on, where the back patio is, it's right straight up the side, that's what you mean, door.
The only way to access the patio would be to come through the actual dining room, so nobody can get in or out of that spot unless they come through the dining, because we need to know that they're out there, so I can send servers over to serve them.
So is this totally enclosed and fenced?
Yes.
Yes.
With an exit out, because you need to have an exit out.
Which way is north on this, on this chart right here, just pointing north, because I don't know whether...
North, south.
Yeah, I know where...
Up Stafford Road.
On this plan.
Sure, that way I want to say, straight down.
North will be over here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So there's a door...
If I'm looking at it this way right here, I'm looking almost to the straight to the other wall.
So there's a door that goes...
To the north.
To the main road.
There's a door that goes inside to the bar, and then there's a con, it's a concrete pad patio?
Yes, that's all enclosed, the fence is...
And how high is the fence?
Uh, six feet.
Okay. And then, and then you want to put up another, or you want to coordinate?
This is all there, all that fence is already, all existing, and it's all there.
And then there's gonna be a barbecue pit?
Oh, yeah, yes, this way.
That's what I meant, so is, does that fence exist, or are you fencing off the...
No, we'd like to put that up to keep the people away from the pit, to keep everybody away from everything.
But then they'd have to go, if they did have to go, the, the exit for them would be to go out through the barbecue pit.
All down here.
This too.
All down here.
Or down here. Or down here. And then, I...
Off of the bar, all back through the bar.
Then underneath this, there's this box, but I, is that, it says garage?
That's an existing garage. And the other building on the angle, that's all garages. So, that's a solid wall.
And then there's an area that says grass?
Yes, that's all grass.
And then, are these tables too?
Yeah, we're just figuring tables to sit there.
So, there, but is this fenced in?
Yes. That whole area is all fenced in. That line is all fenced and building.
So, this line here that separates the concrete pad from the grass area, is there a fence?
Yes, all around. This area right here, this is an entire fence, fence, fence. Well, this is a building. Comes up, this is a building. So, and the fence is right here. So, you can't get in or out of it.
The dotted line that it, that's at the top?
No, it's just a concrete pad.
Okay. So, there's, so there's no fence. So, the restaurant's here, and then there's this concrete pad, and that's got a big fence around it. And you're going to have one area blocked off for a barbecue pit. And then there's a garage.
Yeah.
And then there's an opening to a fenced grass area.
That's all, it's all the same wide open area, but it's all fenced in.
And how many tables in total are you planning on having between the pad and the grass area?
Well, they're like six for like 24 feet.
We'll schematicize once the fire department comes in and gives us what we can do, maybe six to eight. There are, we don't have a capacity yet. So, once they go over that, and we figure that all out, then we'll know how many we can have inside. It can be outside. And then you have to understand, how often is that patio going to be used after rain and snow and maybe four months? So, we can move some of those in to make the right seating capacity when it's not in use. So, we don't have a definite yet.
So, you don't, you don't have a board of health certificate yet, or you do?
We can't get one until we're actually ready to, like, that's the last thing we get.
Okay. And how many seats in the restaurant?
Well, from 95 between the bar, the restaurant, the outside, everything.
Which is what it was prior. So, it'll be around that.
So, there are 95 seats in the restaurant, about?
No. The capacity is about 96 people. So, there were probably enough to sit probably 70.
70?
Yes.
And then the outside, 24.
So, maybe 70 seats inside. And then depending, because you're showing one, two, three, four, five tables just here on the grass, not including the...
So, five tables of four people would be maybe 20 people outside.
But, but you don't have any tables on the concrete patio?
Well, we're not sure. You know, we might.
We might. We just think, look wise, it would be nicer to have them on the grass area with flowers, is what we're thinking.
I'm only trying to figure out how many people you're planning on serving outside. That's what I'm, and are there people, it says in this narrative that they're only going to be there if you're serving food. But it looks like, since there isn't a floor plan, it looks like there's a big congregating area for sort of, you know, just cocktails, I guess, is my question.
That's one of the things that, when I looked at this building, this location, which everyone has an issue today, and it's unfortunate that we live in a society where you're afraid to leave an unattended drink, whether you're sitting at a table, and you want to go out and have a cigarette, whatever the reason. People are very reluctant to do that. Number two, I think it's an eyesore. If you didn't have that area where people could smoke, they're going to go out in front of the building. You know, in front of the building. We don't want people standing around in front of the building.
I was just, I mean, I just am trying to get a feel for the size of this.
I just want to say one thing. I'm sorry to interject. But, you know, what happens is, in reviewing the DVR regulations for this, when the applicant applies, they're supposed to list the premises which these applicants have done. And I'm just going off the applicant. And both schematics, I'm counting 73 seats indoors and another 32 seats outdoors, because the narrative says up to eight tables. So, I'm assuming that there will be four chairs to the table. That's another 32, which comes out to 105 spaces. I'm sorry, 105 seats. Now, the only thing that I'm looking at is two issues, which is one thing that needs to happen. It has to be zoning compliance.
Before you go there, we want to keep it down to 95 or less. So, before I run the lap table off or do anything.
Okay, I'm just going with what the application says. So, that means that there would have to be 26 parking spaces in the lot. And I don't know if there is. There may be, but I don't have that in the application. That's what your zoning requires, and that doesn't include the parking spaces that need to be dedicated for the employees. That's the first thing. The second thing is, on this, on the outdoor area with the seating, I'm just not sure where that is in relation to the lot line based on what we have. So, I can't tell you tonight whether or not the application complies with the zoning. But to me, those are the issues that need to be addressed. One thing in your zoning ordinance that you need to know, parking for a restaurant is not geared towards capacity. It's geared towards seating. Now, of course, you know, seating goes into the size of it. But that's, to me, what needs to be looked at here. Excuse me, I don't know how many seats there are in, spaces there are in this parking lot.
When we drew everything up, when Paul drew everything up, and I looked at it, because I work in many, many restaurants, and I looked at it, we basically, the building is under complete and total construction right now. If you go, like, there's nothing in there except construction. So, it was more of a visual thing. We didn't take into account heads. We were just like, we could put a table there. We could put a table there. We haven't even physically put tables where they belong. So, all of this is tentative, meaning we would get told how many we could have, and we would work with it at that point. Because to be completely honest, we haven't lined tables up anywhere. The tables aren't even in the building. So, we don't know where they're going to go, or how they're going to fit.
Can I make a suggestion on this? I don't think it's a zoning issue in terms of parking. If the, for this time only, if this application were to be approved, if the service was limited to the indoors for the premises as set forth, it doesn't mean they can't come back later on and ask for outdoor seating. But I just think, for purposes of tonight, the focus ought to be on the interior to move this thing along. I don't think zoning is an issue there because of the pre-existing use. It's prior non-conformal use. They can go forward.
We don't, hopefully, you know, we don't want to be a nuisance to our neighbors, and we certainly do not want to be a nuisance to the town. So, we would like to hopefully be able to use that space. Again, not being able to use that space really kind of hurts us in what we're trying to do.
This license will be up again for review in November. So, whenever you, whenever it's constructed, you're looking at a couple of months. I think it will allow the applicant to make sure that it complies with zoning, but also have a record of use that they can point to when this license is up for renewal in November.
Chief Blakey?
Yes, regarding the use of the outside patio, just curious, how is it going to maintain alcohol control? Is there going to be a waitress out there to monitor this? Are people going to get their drinks and go out there? My concern is the fact that there are other underage people out there playing horseshoes or whatever they're doing. There's no, there's no protocols in place whether we prevent someone else from getting alcohol. We've had a similar situation in pool halls, et cetera, so.
There'll be no serving of alcohol out there. In other words, there's not going to be a bar outside. As far as the horseshoe pits, they're nonexistent. We're taking those out. That's not the atmosphere we want there. We don't want that kind of noise. We don't want that kind of atmosphere outside. So, those pits are being taken out. We want to use this space for dining.
And as far as underage drinking, no matter where you have a patio, that's going to be a concern if you're a family restaurant. Being in the business for such a long time, it's eyes and ears at all times. It's the security cameras that we're going to have outside, which there will be a monitor for inside. And if anybody at any point is out there dining, there has to be a staff member out there as well, whether it's the server just hanging around, looking and keeping up on things. But it's the same, every server, every bartender, everybody in the building, as well as myself, Paul, and Scott are TIP certified. Every employee that we plan on hiring will be TIP certified. We know the laws. We know that they're responsible. We know that it's a criminal charge to the server. We will be all over underage drinking. We know. But if, that could happen inside as well. You have to have your eyes, whether they're in the building, outside of the building, coming in from outside, you have to have your eyes on that at all times, whether people are drinking in your establishment or in the patio.
Will, will you be serving alcohol out there? Will the waitress?
The servers will be bringing it to the table. If you sat down and ordered, you're going to sit down and order, a server's going to come over to you. So, they would go back in and get your drinks.
Is that allowed, Tony, under a current licensing?
Well, I know it does it at Evelyn's, the Bolt House, the Red Dory, Little Bear, Four Grills, and Six Places in Tivoli. We did some research. That allows it.
If, if the premises is defined as including the patio, yes. And that's, that's a concern. And I think what the chief is driving at is, is there going to be a defined barrier between where the service of alcohol, because that's serving of alcohol. It's going to be served if you bring it to the table. And I think what the chief is driving at is, is they're going, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, is there going to be a defined barrier between where the patio is and the parking lot or the road or wherever it is?
There is a fence there that goes all the way around that whole enclosed area, six and a half feet tall, six feet tall, so.
Okay, it's going to have surveillance cameras. It's going to have people monitoring at all times. Well, there's no way they can get off the property or out to the parking lot or anything of that nature. That'd probably be okay. But again, my concern is that someone bring it over to the table, and then they are responsible for that. Thank you.
So, Tony, you mentioned parking. Is there, I don't see any parking information with the application.
It's only a concern if the outdoor seating is included. The inside seating, however, is grandfathered in. Whether or not they have enough parking, I don't even know if that's the case. But because of the prior use, that, that doesn't become an issue. But if the patio is to be used, then it becomes a capacity issue.
That's a very good sized parking lot that's there. I don't know.
I'd say a rough guess, maybe 25, somewhere around, rough guess, I think.
I'll count them.
It's huge. And there's ostrich parking as well.
Yeah, it does.
No ostrich parking.
May I ask when you're planning to be open? I mean, what, your construction?
Yeah, we were hoping July 21st.
Which is why the patio is so important.
Is your patio important enough for us to have to continue this? Or would you like to get, if it's possible, if we can get you inside?
Inside and then continue two weeks for the outside?
Well, not a continuance. You would have to reapply for the outside. You said, I think that's what the attorney was saying.
What would we have to do, reapply? What are we missing to reapply? What are we missing?
Talk to the guy with the glasses over there.
I believe the parking spaces.
Now, you're going to have to get, well, you're going to have to get a zoning, you're going to have to get a zoning review from the building official. Because there's another issue I have with the patio. I don't know if it hits the setbacks. I just don't know. And you need to comply with zoning. And that's something that is an issue, although I do understand where Councilman LeBeau is coming from. The question is, is do you go forward now and try for that later on?
The thing is, the fences, everything was all there when we came in. So, it had to be approved somehow by somebody.
It wasn't.
No, that fence was all, well...
Fence was there, but it wasn't with the license.
We should have saw that.
Actually, so, Tony, I, I thought what Councilman LeBeau said was what you were suggesting. That's what, that's what I thought, that you could get in there, get started. At least you're getting some income. You might not have a patio. Is that, I thought that's what you were suggesting.
That's correct, yes. And I'm on the same page with Councilman LeBeau.
Okay. You're just not, you just can't guarantee the next step.
That's correct.
Okay. But at least, so, so at least that would get you in, and then it would have a record. So, if you're looking like you're doing a good job and stuff, it would, that's, that's also what I'm thinking, too. You have a record to show for it. So, it's not everything that you want, but it's moving, I think that's what you were saying, is moving it along.
What is the, what is the town solicitor's opinion in the time period this would take?
Could we get it all in for the next agenda if we did our, if we did our legwork correctly?
Maybe. How's that? I don't know.
Madam President?
Ms. Edwards?
Yeah. I have a question for the solicitor. Hypothetically speaking, if we move forward with the inside and not the patio, because obviously, there's an issue about service on the patio, does that prohibit people from the, from the establishment from taking their beverage outside?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. They can go out here, but not with their, with their drink.
Okay.
Now, what you were suggesting is when they're up for renewal in November, they get the permission to do the patio.
Yes.
No, the...
Yes.
That's what I thought that you were suggesting.
Well, they could, between now and November, apply again for a change in status to the license.
Yes. And then, then they got to come back for their renewal in November. So, it's more, more steps.
We really, yeah, we really need the status to get done.
Understood. But I, you know, I mean, I, you know, who knows with the construction and everything else.
We're just trying to figure out exactly what we have to do. So, I have ducks in a row. So, we're very confused on where we go from here.
It appears that the only issue you're going to have is if you have enough parking spots.
Do you need a parking plan?
You need a parking plan, and count your parking spots. And then...
That's not the only one.
Just to check, I don't know.
So, it has to be resumed, reviewed by the building official to make sure it complies with zoning.
Yes.
Madam President?
Ms. Edwards?
Would it be possible for somebody from the town to provide the applicant with the appropriate steps to get this squared away? Because, quite frankly, it seems like every time they come in front of us, another thing is added. And I'm getting very tired of, no offense, you guys are nice people, but I'm getting very tired of seeing you come before the council with zero action taken.
I'm sick of you.
Not, not sick of you. I'm sick of, I'm sick of this process continuing. So, I don't know who would refer that to. Is that, is that to the solicitor that we can get this squared away? Is that to the administrator? Is it, I mean, is it some...
Building official.
Building official. I mean, can we, can we just get this thing done, and so they can come back and not say, well, what else do you want from me today? Because it's very tiring.
It's frustrating, huh?
Yes.
So, he knows, but they need us.
I thought that's what we had done the last meeting, was someone to sit down with them and give them everything they needed. So, when they came back today, they could proceed. That's what I thought we did at the last meeting. But evidently, they didn't get the right information, or...
Well, I think, I think for the last meeting, it was, we referred them to Chief Blakey, and it sounds like everything was squared away with the chief. But there was, there was, obviously, it's not your department here, but there's obviously some stuff that was missing somewhere and lost in translation. So, I just, I don't know if we can get this all fleshed out, and we can, you know...
Here's the thing, the additional stuff that came in, which is what you need to do. And all of a sudden, you got 32 seats. I'm just taking a look at the parking. See, they could get approved tonight with, on the inside. The question is the outside. That's why they have to come back. On the inside, that thing's ready to go. Everything's in order. It's the outside, and it's the extra seats. And I'm taking a look at it. And I know they said four seats, but the application says eight. So, that's 32 extra seats. That's eight extra spaces.
Could we fix that?
The drawing shows five, which is 25. Shows five tables, not four, which is 20.
I would say those are tables of two.
Real detailed plan. Outside patio area, we'd like to put in about eight tables for dining.
Eight tables of two.
They could be four. I don't know.
On a plan, we have five drawn in.
So, I don't want to, I don't want to criticize town officials on this. I'm seeing eight tables. I take a look, I think that's four seats. Now, I take a look at the zoning. That's the problem.
Madam President?
It's in order tonight on the inside.
Okay. Ms. LeBeau?
I just have a suggestion. If this is, will work, being, have gone through your hoops that you're jumping through right now. If you get your license for this, and we speed up your possible outside before another meeting, get, take my advice. Get your license. Get busy. And then come out and work on this other problem that you have with the... And then come out and work on this other problem that you have with the parking.